Being just after seven o'clock on April 7, 2008, I would like to read our agenda of the school committee meeting tonight. First, we will have visitors, approval of minutes. The appointment of our new special ed director by Dr. Christopher Martas. Mr. Theodos will join us for the NEASC submission and expectation report. Textbook adoption, we will have Mrs. Spinelli and Mr. Faulkner addressing the U.S. history. And for the elementary grade three, we will have Mrs. Spinelli and Mrs. Caselli addressing those issues. Full-day kindergarten update will follow FY09 budget, other matters. And then at that time, I will accept a motion, a second enroll call, to enter into executive discussion, I mean, executive session for discussion of collective bargaining strategies. There will be no open meeting after that. Visitors? Approval of minutes? Are there any corrections or additions?
Yes, Bev, I had one. Under the Taylor School Principal Search update, page please, three, the top paragraph, last sentence, "Mr. Harrington asked Ms. Adair and Ms. Lord to participate in the screening committee." He asked for volunteers, so I thought just for clarification, he asked for volunteers and then we volunteered. It looks, so I wanted to change it to, "Mr. Harrington asked for volunteers to participate in the screening committee," and Ms. Adair and Ms. Lord volunteered.
Okay, that's good. Do you have that, Wendy?
Unless someone can think of a better word for volunteer, but...
Thank you.
That's my only correction.
Thank you.
And I do have one on page four. Under other matters, in talking about the updating the partnership for drug-free Foxborough, the second sentence says she stated that students are doing community service. It's the partnership, the group, the students, I believe it should read, "The group has discussed having students do, create public service announcements," because we asked that everyone agree to that. That's really what we were discussing.
How would you like that sentence re-...
It would say, "The group has discussed having students create public service announcements." And if we could add a sentence, the last sentence, add a last additional sentence that would read, "The school committee and superintendent gave their support for this effort, period. Dr. Martas will be briefing administrators," because that's what we had discussed.
In that same paragraph.
I make a motion, we accept as amended.
One second. All right, all in favor? Wendy, do you have all that?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a real pleasure tonight to offer the committee a recommendation for our new special education director. I'll just review the memo, the cover memo that I sent to you. I am pleased to recommend Ms. Arlene Gruber as the Director of Special Education for the Foxborough Public Schools. As you know, the position was posted in November, and a screening committee was formed to interview candidates and offer finalists to me. And as I think the public may know, but certainly the committee knows, Katie Adair and Bev Lord were school committee members, and Debbie Spinelli chaired the interviewing committee. I interviewed the finalists with Paul Jackson. After extensive reference checking and another interview, I am very encouraged to review the person with outstanding experience and ability. Arlene is currently the Special Education Administrator for the elementary and middle schools of the Sharon Public Schools. She has had extensive experience as a special education team chairperson, learning disability specialist, and teacher. At this time, Arlene is a doctoral candidate at Leslie University and holds a master's degree from Curry College and a bachelor of science degree in elementary education and moderate special needs from Leslie College. Arlene's references speak of her ability to work with parents, teachers, and administrators in a collaborative and collegial manner. She has an outstanding knowledge of education research and trends, and is able to initiate programs to help students and staff. I look forward to introducing Arlene Gruber to you at the school committee meeting on Monday evening. Welcome, Arlene.
Thank you.
And I think it's customary for the school committee, school committee members, to ask questions. Why don't I lead off and give you an opportunity just to share maybe some other things that I didn't mention in the memo, or more specifically, your interest in working in the Foxborough Public Schools.
Well, I think I have a lot to bring and a lot to offer from my many years of experience in working in special education. I have over 20 years of experience, both practical, and I have a lot of formal knowledge. I continue to be in school and learning more all the time. And I think I can bring that sense of teaching and learning is an ongoing thing. It's not something that stops. It's a lifelong process. I'm involved right now in a doctoral program where I've learned some new things about practitioner inquiry, which I think can be very beneficial to the staff here in Foxborough. I've also been exploring the concept of teacher learning communities and teacher study groups, and I think that will be very beneficial to the community at large, the school community. And I think I bring a very warm and caring person who knows a lot about special education, but cares also a lot about people. So I look forward to getting to know all the staff, not just special educators, but all the staff in the Foxborough Public Schools, the parents, the other administrators, and the students.
I'd like to...
Do you have a question?
Certainly do. Welcome. Your references were outstanding. Claire Jackson, the superintendent of Sharon Public Schools, highly recommended you in terms of your innovation, the quality that you brought to IEPs and instructional practices. Could you just take a moment and just highlight some of those accomplishments that you achieved at Sharon?
Sure. When I came to Sharon, we worked a lot on IEP development in terms of the whole eligibility process and working with staff around what does it mean to find a student eligible for special education, and really putting some formal structure in place to how we go about doing that. We also did a lot of training on IEP writing and the collaborative effort of a team. A lot of input goes into an IEP, not just special education input, but parents certainly have a very important part in that process because they know their child better than anybody, and they are an integral part of supporting, developing, and implementing their education. Teachers, general ed teachers, are a very important part of the IEP process. So we really worked on how we went about doing that as a community. And I think that that really helped us make the process very collaborative. It's not always collaborative, but we try to make it collaborative. But it also helped us to know, you know, what is the process? What is eligibility? What is special education? And how do we go about deciding who gets those services?
My only other question I'd like to ask, and you have an outstanding career. You've been the special ed director K through eight at Sharon Public Schools. What would you, based on your background, what would you like to achieve for special education students in our high school from grades nine to 12? What do you think some of those issues would be, and what do you feel you would bring to that?
Well, I think that period in a child's, student's education is really looking towards what they're going to do when they graduate from high school. And I think I'd like to bring a sense of how we plan for that, and how do we prepare students to become contributing members of their community when they leave high school. So I first need to get to know, you know, what kind of programs you have at the high school, and what people feel is working well at the high school, and maybe some things that they want to look at. But I think starting to plan for that transition out of school is very important, and I'd like to focus on that.
Again, welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? Welcome. A familiar face to me.
Yes.
You've already partially answered my question about how important do you feel it is to include the parents. You mentioned you try to make it collaborative. Sometimes it is not always collaborative. Do you have a strategy that you have used that has been successful in arriving at a compromise that you'd like to share with us?
Sure. Well, one rule of thumb that we follow, and you may very well do that here in Foxborough, is if we receive a rejected or a partially rejected IEP, it's our practice to always recommune the team. And I think even more important than that is communication and respect, and developing relationships with parents and team members that are respectful and open, and that lead us to a point where we can respectfully disagree on certain things, but then work towards something we can both live with. Because you are going to have situations where not everybody's in agreement, and there may be something that the parents want, that the team, you know, does not agree to or doesn't feel is necessary. And the bottom line is, we do have to resolve that. We have to come up with a compromise. So I try to work towards something that everybody can live with as a starting point. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Martha?
In reading over your letters that people have sent in support, I think you'll be leaving with mixed feelings. They're very supportive. They talk about your hands-on approach, your interpersonal skills, your collaborative skills, and I think that's something that's very important. I wonder how you feel about trying to keep students and accommodate our special needs students within the system, and how will you work to try to bring back some of these students so we can meet their needs within the system?
Well, I think first I have to get to know what's in place in terms of programming. One thing that I would do is also get to know the added district caseload. Who are the students? Where are they? Why are they there? Is that working for them? When I first came to Sharon, we had a large number of students placed out, and the first couple of years, I did spend time getting to know who those students were. And there were, you know, a handful of students that we really knew should be in our community, in our school community. I had some students who were getting on vans and, you know, doing an 80-mile round trip and going to another public school in another community in a general education classroom. So I would look to see what kinds of programs the students are going out for, and how could we maybe fine-tune what we do here to make programming for them.
Thank you.
Katie?
Welcome. I've had the opportunity to ask you questions during the special education search, education director's search. So again, your resume and your references are very outstanding. How do you see yourself in the first 30 to 60 days here at Foxborough? What would be the first things that you would do here?
Well, I think one of my goals is to ensure a smooth transition from one leader to another. So I would find out as much as I could from the outgoing Director of Special Education. I'd also, one of my goals would be to get to know people and start to form relationships with people within the community. I'd want to make time to learn about the culture at each school, because I think each school community has their own culture, but also the community at large. I've already started by reading your website, and I was actually reading the high school program of studies last night. So I would spend time really trying to get to know what you have here and how things are set up. I certainly would want to work towards building relationships and then developing a collaborative approach to any problem-solving or work that we would do as a community. And I think as a newcomer, you know, you have an advantage, because you can take a fresh look at things, you can ask questions, and you have that advantage of people letting you be the newbie on the block for a while. So those would be some of the things.
Any other questions?
Just a question for Dr. Martas. As I'm not the expert in certification, but this is a question that always comes up. I would just like to put it out there. The certification for Director of Special Education, is that the same as administrator of special education? Or will we be, are they one and the same, or will we be filing?
No, we have a direct, the Director's certification is fine, and Arlene has that certification, so.
I noticed the list, but I didn't, it was said a little differently, and that's a question that we often get thrown out in this community, so I just wanted to...
That's a good question, please.
Put it up front.
That's good.
Certified.
Certified.
Qualified and certified.
Yes.
Certified. Motion. I need a motion. I need a motion.
I'll second it.
To accept our student president's recommendation for our new special education director. All in favor?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Arlene, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Let me just give just a little bit more detail. Arlene and I are negotiating a contract, I guess is probably the best way to put it. We're looking at making sure we're competitive and all of that, so I'll be informing the committee once we finish that. We decided that Arlene will start on August 1st.
Oh, good. I was going to ask that question.
And she will overlap by about two weeks with Cindy Brunelli, who is leaving, retiring actually on her birthday in August. So we have good overlap with that. So I think this will work very, very well. Cindy and I have already had a few conversations, and she's anxious to meet Arlene and to get started with that. So I think it'll be a very, very good transition. And Arlene has her friends and mentors right next door, right down the street, so we're in good shape with that, too.
Absolutely.
And I had a great opportunity to talk to many of them. Kate, you mentioned Claire Jackson. Claire and I worked together in Brookline, and so I really valued her input into this process. We, you know, we go a long way back, and I really trust her judgment, and she, I think, was right on with her analysis and working with Arlene, so, welcome.
Thank you. I'm really happy to be here, very excited to work with all of you. It's a great opportunity for me, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Jeff is coming up. Let me just frame a little bit of this. We have, we have some information that Jeff has provided, but we have an important part of the accreditation process and the follow-up with the accreditation process is the work that Jeff and high school faculty has been working on for a time now, and so Jeff is here to go over the special progress report. So Jeff, welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, the other piece of why I'm here this evening is I need a vote by the school committee to approve our mission and academic expectations and social and civic expectations. In your packet, you should have received the introductory letter, the 208 special progress report, and just for pleasure reading, I threw in the standards for accreditation for the NEASC. And I did that because it's such a comprehensive document that I think, you know, if you look through it, you begin to have an appreciation for what the high school goes through in this process. So we're happy that we got off to a good start. We will be evaluated in the spring of 2011, so we feel that we're ahead of the schedule, if you will. But one of the important pieces is the approval, again, of the mission and expectation. And I'll just go over a few of the highlights. Following the lead that was set forth by the Foxborough Strategic Planning Committee, the past two years, we worked to develop the mission and expectations. And like I said, this is one of the major standards required by the NEASC. And of any good organization, you should have, you know, kind of a marching order, if you will, and that's what the mission and the expectations give us. A while back, the NEASC, in conjunction with Brown University, set forth those seven standards for accreditation that we'll be trying to comply with as we move down the road. I think the important piece to the acceptance of the mission is what you're saying, I guess, to the high school and the community, is that you buy into what we're trying to do from an academic and a school safety point of view. But more important from my end, all the curricula, the budgetary, and the school-wide decisions are based on our mission. So we've tweaked it a little bit, and we've changed the academic expectations, but really, as a principal, that's kind of my marching order. That's the direction our school will go until you tell me differently, or the budget tells me differently. And every year, we will review the mission and make sure that that's the direction the school community wishes to follow. I think the mission, based on information we received from our parents, from our students, especially from the faculty, parent groups, the principals' coffee hours, the school council meetings, the Foxworthy newsletters, were ways we tried to involve as many constituents as possible in developing the mission and expectation. As far as the social and civic expectations are concerned, they've been in places of last year. If you remember, we have a document that's in every classroom that uses the acronym WOER, and we kind of expound the values of what it is to be a member of the Foxborough community. And so that really isn't new. If you have the second, if you go to the second page on the special report, that's really the essence of why I'm here this evening. I talked briefly about the mission, but as far as academic expectations, what we looked at is global issues that the entire faculty could buy into and support. And so depending the school system you go to, the academic expectations change a little bit, but the five global expectations we have, reading actively and critically, write using standard English for a variety of purposes and audiences, use oral skills to communicate ideas coherently for a variety of purposes, effectively use technology, and develop critical thinking skills for assessing information and problem-solving. And what you'll see in the next year is each department is responsible for two of those academic expectations. And in the back of this document, there's the associated rubrics that go with the expectations. So what we've asked our departments to do is for a couple of departments to take the lead in each academic expectation and to ultimately report out to the community. So let's say English is responsible for reading actively and critically. Probably at the end of the second quarter, in the end of the fourth quarter, the parents will get a document from the teachers highlighting where their child is on these five global issues. The more important point, as I see it, though, it allows our faculty to universally understand what the expectations are for each of those areas, and to work more collaboratively to move these academic expectations to the next level, if you will. So rather than kind of having departments work against each other, this is kind of a global document that they can utilize when appropriate for utilizing assessments to improve academic expectations. And realistically, you know, all our kids should be able to read at the highest levels possible, to be able to critically think, to effectively use technology, so they have global skills. But the essence of what we're trying to do is make them competent in these fields. And that's our mission that we set forth as far as our academic expectations are concerned. And again, what you'll see is all these academic expectations are approved, will be in all our literature. You'll see them in our student handbooks, on the website, faculty handbooks, they'll be part of the teacher induction process, so that we want our teachers to understand what's expected of them, and to be able to use the rest of our faculty as a resource, and then be part of our regular classroom assessment. I think the final piece is, as you look through the standards for accreditation set forth by the NEASC, you begin to get an idea, like I said, of the comprehensiveness of the accreditation process and the work that needs to be put forth. All the standards and descriptors research-based, and I think the important piece that we have to understand in each standard is how do we demonstrate proficiency in all those areas? And you can't really hide anymore, because you have to give straightforward evidence of how your students are learning, the ways they're learning. And again, it's a pretty straightforward process, and I really, I think highly of the NEASC process. I think if you can follow most of those descriptors, your school should be in pretty good shape, you know, in the next three years. And we're hoping that the many conversations we've had in the last two years have been conversations about student assessment, student achievement, and ways to improve our school culture, and the bottom line is obviously make Foxborough High School a better place. So with that being said, that's kind of the overview. I'll certainly entertain any questions you have about the mission and expectation.
Can you just speak a little bit about the classroom assessments?
Mm-hmm.
Are you using the rubrics to do these assessments? Can you just expand a little bit?
Yeah. Yeah. These are more, they're in the back of your special progress report. These are global academic expectations we have for all our students. And so what the intent is, is to dovetail assessments when possible. You're not going to be able to do it all the time, but dovetail assessments when possible. The fifth is global rubric. So at the end of, let's say, the second quarter, the teacher in English should probably have six, maybe eight assessments on reading actively and critically, that they'll be able to assess where a student is on a one-to-four continuum, just like you would on the MCAS reports. So by reporting out, again, parents have a better idea of these global pieces that we're trying to improve in all our students.
Will this be done, these assessments, be done at a certain period of time, or will it be left up to the...
They'll be done, they'll be done throughout the year. So for instance, I might not have a primary responsibility for reading actively and critically, but I may have a couple of assignments as an art teacher that fit into that category. So I'll have that rubric that I'll utilize. Even though I won't be reporting out to the parent, we're asking the students to do the same thing in different areas of the curriculum. So it starts to kind of be a repetitive process, and as a faculty, these are the pieces we feel are important for our kids to know and understand. So instead of kind of, you can create your own rubrics and do other things outside the global assessment. But again, the more we kind of do the process the same way over and over, and for instance, writing across the curriculum, there's an expectation that I have as an English teacher and a social studies teacher of what good writing looks like. And the way we do that is by assessing student work collectively. So this would be the same kind of thing. However, we would report out individually to the parents where their child stands on these expectations.
If I may jump on there?
Sure, go ahead.
So by using these assessments over and over again, so, and parents will not only have report cards, teachers will have their grade books. At some point, I think the report says in 2010, 2011, those teacher books are going to be web-based.
Right.
So the parents will be able to have access to those assessments.
Exactly.
Is that correct?
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Why is it going to take until 2010, 2011 to get there? I mean, that's, that's 2000, that's two years out.
That's the report out, that's the, well, I don't know, that's missed the board a lot of his time for him, but that's to report out electronically. We'll put a report out in hard copies starting next year.
Oh, to parents?
Yeah.
Okay.
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 Okay. Mr. Theodos? I have to say, thank you so much, because this, for the first time in all of my five years, makes it very clear, and I know that you've spent a lot of time, and I appreciate your involvement with not just the faculty, but getting input from all of the community groups at the, at the high school. If I read the report correctly, also in terms of the update, the detailed response section, we have met, if I look through everything, we've completed everything except for the science renovation, which we can't go further. We've updated in terms of where we are, but we cannot complete that work until we, until it's budgeted.
Right. And there were a few descriptors in each standard that we need to comply... And there are, and there are a few descriptors in each standard that we need to comply more closely with. It's just a matter of time to have those conversations, which we just haven't had time to go after at this point.
But if I read the last section, so everything in the detailed response section, we've completed everything, and at one point, I believe there were like 50 items.
Oh, yeah, as far as the recommendation, yes.
We've whittled it down year after year. And now, if I, if I'm reading your report that you've submitted correctly, we have actually completed all of it, except the science lab renovation. Is that correct?
Right. Well, I'm hoping that's right. I'll know in a little while whether I'm right or not. The piece that's happened for us, though, is I believe we were evaluated under the changing standards, if you will. I'm not sure if it was a completely changed process, so that they continue to ask questions in the special progress report that make you tweak what you're doing from the old way of being accredited to the new way. So we're moving in that direction. But we think we're in pretty good shape. We revamped the former mission and expectation. We just thought it was just too cumbersome to be able to provide the information and streamline that a little bit, so.
It's a phenomenal amount of work in terms of what you've done and how your team, though, has accomplished, because you've whittled that down. And my only last question is that the way in which the school committee, or that we can help you the most and your team the most, it seems like there's still, you've met the rubric and the assessments head-on, and that was, that was, one of those detailed responses, the biggest bulk of all of this. Yet, if I'm reading the back of the report, it seems like you still need, there's a lot of attention to the curriculum that will need to be looked at, that aspect of student assessment, leadership and organization, kind of. So what can we, as a school committee, I know we're so glad to have Debbie Spinelli, what else can we do to make sure that you have all of the curriculum pieces done in time for the next scheduled report?
Well, I think what I wanted to reflect, for the most part, the curriculum's in pretty good shape, but because we've changed the academic expectations, we have to go back and reflect them in all our documents. So that's what those portions of the needs are that we're looking at. And I'll be happy to give Ms. Spinelli the honor of reviewing all the documents and make sure that we're where we need to be. And I think we're in good shape.
I'm not, I'm pleased, I'm not too glad.
No, I think it's a wonderful idea. I really do, so.
I apologize. That's not what I meant to say. The curriculum is the piece that your team has to do, is the next.
Yeah. Like I said, it's been done, it just has to be tweaked to reflect the new standard. So we're, but we're in good shape there.
And if I may interject, you know, a good professional relationship is like a tennis game, so I would like to lob the ball back in Sotero's direction. I actually am really happy that this year, they got an early start, because NEASC does force you to look at yourself on a regular basis. And I think it's great that the high school started looking at themselves again early this year, so that they can anticipate where they need to do the work. We have plenty of time to do it. So I think they've taken a really proactive approach, and I want to commend them.
Well, thank you both for getting me off the hot seat. The only last thing I'll say is dynamite. This is probably the best document. Thank you so much for including it. It really made it very clear to me. Mrs. Lottary.
Actually, I was here when we did, when we started this review process in the first place. I can't believe I might still be here when we started all over again. That's a learning, it's a learning experience, I'll look at it that way. When I look at what you talk of, you gave us the standards and accreditation, and under the guidance services, because I know we have an ongoing issue with that, they talk about individual and group meetings with counseling personnel. They also outline in here that each student shall have a person that they go to, plus, you know, probably somebody within the system, plus their guidance counselors that really know them. Have we worked on that at all, or are we going back to the group guidance concept?
Yes, we'll be in full swing next year. In fact, the head of guidance is going to a group guidance counseling session, I forget where it is, Friday. But the personalization piece is the piece we haven't had enough discussion on at this point. That's one of the main pieces for next year, and I believe it was on our school improvement plan to move in that direction. It's just, you know, the amount of conversations you can have, you just run out of time. So that'll be one of the things we'll bring to the forefront next year, how do we want to do it?
Good. That's good to hear. I think that's really.
Yeah, it's not going to be that easy to implement, so I don't really have a good, a good plan as of yet. But again, through conversations with the faculty and then people, come up with something that makes sense.
Jeff, I think we'll be ready to have an update sometime between now and the end of the school year about what has taken place in guidance.
Okay.
So I think it'll, I think it'll make some sense, and then, and then we'll push the plan ahead for next year, and we can be very clear about what we, what we want to try to do. So I think I'd, I'd go to work. Need a.
Any further questions, though? I will entertain a motion to accept this. Martha? Kate? Second?
Do you want it specific around mission?
Yeah, the acceptance of the mission and expectations, that second sheet.
Academic expectations, civic and social expectations. So that would be the motion.
Okay.
Do you need another, first or second?
No. No, no, I think, I just wanted to make sure that it's getting noted for my meeting. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work.
Jeff, before you leave, I just want, because I'm going to mention it under other anyway, but I want to thank you and the faculty for all the work you did last week. A very difficult situation, and you really stepped up, and people really came together, and I'll talk more about the plan later. And I know you have another meeting to go to, but I just wanted to publicly thank you. I know that, so many of you know that Larry Harrington sent a letter to the entire faculty, not just here at the high school, but across the system, thanking people for all the work that they did. And, you know, we've all been in other districts, and sometimes it doesn't go as well in a very difficult situation as, as it did this time. But your administration, department heads, and teachers, and support staff, I thought, did a fabulous job in, in supporting each other and supporting students, which is really the mark of a terrific high school, so.
Thanks. And I think, you know, I need to note, too, that the faculty did step up and did a wonderful job, and we haven't really missed a beat, and we're ready to go with a new instructor. Well, not new, you'll know him, but again, we didn't miss a beat. Now, that was a credit to, you know, the entire faculty, there really was, you know, when adversity, adversity strikes, I think you can tell the makeup of your faculty, and they did a great job, and should be commended, so, thanks.
Thank you. All right, I guess I would like to turn the next section of our meeting over to Mrs. Spinelli.
Okay. Textbook adoption. I would like to ask Mr. Dawn Faulkner and Mrs. Diane Casilli to come to the table, if you don't mind coming together. Together, these two people oversee history and social sciences, which we call social studies, K through 12 in the district, Mrs. Casilli being the K through eight coordinator, and Mr. Faulkner being the department head at the high school. So we're very lucky to have these two, so you should feel pretty comfortable about your social studies, because you have two really great people at the helm together. We've been meeting a little bit, the three of us, to talk about a textbook adoption meeting, so I want to just preface what they're going to say by giving you some context, which I also put in the memo to the school committee. Normally, you know, we have that five-year cycle of curriculum review, which we'll be updating you in about a month or, say, about six weeks, I think we're on for, but sometime between now and the end of the school year, we'll be updating our five-year cycle for your information as well. And we normally follow that five-year cycle. Normally, the money and the budget follows the recommendations from a review team. For example, we have science review going on right now, there'll be recommendations that come out from that. We have a six-through-12 math review going on this year. Their recommendations will be coming to you at the May meeting. So usually, the money follows the recommendations. We do have textbook adoption money this year, however, the recommendations for math and science are not ready yet. We're getting very close, but they're not, but they're not ready yet. So it'd be ideally, we could use next year's money for the recommendations that are finishing up this spring. We normally do not ask to have an approval of a textbook adoption outside of that review cycle, but we have two circumstances that we felt was important enough to come before the committee. So Dr. Magnus and I have had some conversations about this, and this is why we're going forward. So the first one is at the high school, and Mr. Faulkner will talk to you about that. It's to, it's for textbook adoption for the U.S. History Honors classes for sophomores and juniors. Our initial intention was to only purchase for the sophomores, we don't have a book, for next year, but we can get a better deal if we do them together. Dr. Magnus and I talked about that. Mrs. Casilli, we're talking to you about Grade Three History, and that curriculum is the Massachusetts history, the local history for children in Grade Three, which is tested on the Grade Five test, four and five curriculums, it's completely different. So they study the history of Massachusetts in Grade Three, and that's the only time they fully study it, before the fifth grade test. So these are two critical needs that are not going to change, even when we review our history and social sciences next year, because they're very tied to the MCAS, which is what I explained in the memo. So because we're 100% confident that these two courses of study will not change, we felt comfortable coming to you with a critical need in both areas. So I'd like to start with Mr. Faulkner, and he can talk to you about the U.S. History.
Yeah, it's, it's right there in the memo. You know, U.S. History I is being taught next year for the first time at the high school. It used to be in the eighth grade, and now it's coming up to the high school. So we do have a book for the college prep, but we absolutely have no book for U.S. I sophomores honors. So we had to go look for one of those. And at the same time, just like Debbie said, the junior book, if you notice here, it actually is, I went back, it's 1994, not 1993, but it's a 14-year-old book that the juniors are using in honors. They're falling apart, they went in the book room today, I mean, they were just, they're just in terrible shape. The teachers don't particularly like it. The teacher that picked the book back 15 years ago liked it, but the staff today is all new. They're not happy with it. They fell in love with this book when we were talking about doing it for sophomores, and we thought it would be a good idea to follow right along and use the same book for juniors' honors. I brought in three publishers: Apprentice Hall in November, McGlue Lattell in December, Glenn Cole, McGraw-Hill in February. We wrote the criteria sheets, and then in March, the meeting, we made a choice. You know, they came in, they presented the text, they answered questions, they talked about their technology, they talked about their teacher resource, and we really thought this was, excuse me, the best book that we could come up with.
And I also want to add that Dawn did a really good job finding out what other towns in the area use, and this is by far the most popular textbook for that course. It comes with all the bells and whistles. And when we met with the representative, just to give you an idea of why we decided to do the two years together, even the sophomore is the critical need, no doubt about that, but it would cost us about $8,000 and change for the sophomores alone, but if we go ahead and purchase the other half, the juniors, the representative is willing to give us a better deal. So it actually would, would cost us, you know, between eight and nine for the sophomores, and we can get the second set of books, equal number, for about $5,000, between five and six. So we have a much better financial deal if we do it now, rather than one this year and one next year as two separate orders. So we thought that would be a good idea to do.
I don't know if there's any general questions about the process or the book?
Would you mention, just because we've had all the bells and whistles with all of the other textbooks, when you mentioned the online resources for teachers and perhaps in the future for parents, could you just describe that? Larry's not here, but that's the question he would be asking you.
I can tell you what it's going to come with. I have the little laundry list right here. It actually includes a lot of the teaching presentations on CD-ROM, which is great, so that teachers can, you know, kids are visually interested in things, so not everything is presented. Lectures, they've got a lot of great visuals on that. There's an electronic library of primary sources that is really important for teaching history, is to look at, you know, everybody knows a primary source, it means the real thing. So it's, whether it's a picture of an artifact, or the Declaration of Independence, or whatever it is, you can see what it actually looks like. So those are on a CD. There are American Stories DVD series, so there's audio visuals that go with it. They have America's music on CD. This is one of the best things. There's, there are teacher resources that are available to teachers to assist with planning. So there is an E edition, E edition, that actually is what it is, small E, capital E. So the teachers, or uppercase is the proper word, uppercase E. So the teachers can go online and see the teacher's edition, so if they want to access it from home, they can, and they're planning. There is an easy planner. There are resources to go on a flash drive, so you can just carry around the flash drive.
That was big for the teachers.
That's very big.
The flash drive. Every teacher will have a flash drive, so they go home, they just plug it into their computer, and they have all the resources right there. That's, was a big selling point for this particular book. And for every book that we buy, every student will have an online copy at home.
Correct.
Wow. Excellent.
And people will be able to access that.
And the last thing is, it has a test generator, which all, most of the new programs, even if it's not social studies, come with, so that you can look at a bank of test questions, both essay and multiple choice, and select the ones and create a test that way. So, and it's very flexible, you can move them around, and that's, that's a great tool as well. So.
I would, I would just add, and I appreciate your explanation on the technology, but thank you for giving us the overview. To help frame this up, we knew in 2005, when it was last looked at, it was not a full review. We had to just do bits and pieces so that we were in alignment with the Massachusetts frameworks. We were able to do some books at that time, but we knew we would have to do others. So although we normally wait, I'm very comfortable, not just with what we're doing and why, but also, Mr. Faulkner, with the process that you used, getting all of the teachers and having them sit through the presentations of the, of the three vendors and really, you know, working with that. So I'm, I'm more than comfortable. We should go for it.
I'd say they were very thorough. And the best thing, too, is that the test for history, social science, won't count for another few years, but it's really a great idea to get a new textbook early and get the kinks worked out in the program for a few years, and not just buy a new program the year that the kids have to do really well, and it's going to count for the graduation. So it's, I think our timing is very good.
It makes a lot of sense.
Proactive rather than reactive. And Wikipedia is not going to stand a chance as a primary source anymore with this textbook in your hands.
Because anybody can put anything on Wikipedia, and it might not be accurate.
Well, I.
So do you, do you need a separate vote for that?
I think it would probably be good to have this.
Separate?
Doesn't matter?
All right.
Oh, okay.
Then, then Kate provided me with a wonderful segue into Diane's, when she said that in 2005, there was a mini-review where you were trying to address some needs. And at that time, I think the district did a good job identifying that third-grade Massachusetts history was an area of need that isn't going to change. And at that time, that text was identified by this district, when they did their curriculum mapping to look at, we'll call it the mini-review, that that was the need that they had for Grade Three. They were not able to purchase it at the time. So what has happened since is that there are a few copies in the district that people either purchased on their own, gotten free, and their principals have tried to order a few at a time, which isn't really an adoption, as we all know. So she's going to, Diane's going to talk to you a little bit about what happened at that time and why we're coming to you with this request.
At that time, we, of the mini-review, they did some curriculum mapping at Grade Three, and prior to that, some teachers had gotten their hands on some samples of these type of books, and they were able to share them at that time, and they noted that this would be a resource that they'd like to have, because currently, at Grade Three, there is no core social studies resource that is available to all teachers. So right now, the few copies that they do have, they're sharing amongst themselves at each level. This textbook was written specifically to address the Massachusetts state frameworks. It covers the geography, history, famous people and events, economics and government. The teachers have found it to be a very useful textbook in the classroom, and we'd like to purchase additional copies so that every classroom could have a full class set to be utilized.
It's really very developmentally appropriate for third grade, because normally, we know, we're not big fans of textbooks in the elementary school, hardly anyone is, but in this case, it's really very developmentally appropriate with actual photographs of artifacts and other visuals that will help students learn that. And it's called Massachusetts: Our Home. And the only other key piece of information we'd like you to know is that when Diane and I researched this, 80 to 85% of the school districts in Massachusetts currently use this textbook. So we would be in the 15 to maybe 20% minority who don't currently have it. So that, that's how good it is. It was developed specifically for Massachusetts, which is very unusual for a company to develop a textbook for only one state to meet our own standards, but it's been wildly popular because it's very good.
Did you, and you mentioned a comparison that you looked for the, I know, going back to the high school history book, that you did look at area towns.
Yes.
What was, do you have any kind of statistics about that, or just generally what other schools?
I can show you, I, oh, good, Dawn and I each have it.
I mean, this is the towns that are using the Americans, it needs to be Massachusetts.
Okay.
And I just, I just checked off a few that are close by us. Bishop Fian uses it, Oliver Ames uses it, Framingham High School uses it, Franklin
High School, Medway High School, Norwood High School, Stoughton, Wellesley, East Bridgewater, West Bridgewater, just to name a few that are close by us, so.
And these three pages are only eastern Massachusetts.
I'm so noted.
Only eastern.
Right.
Right. Would you like to, would anyone like to see this?
You covered all mine.
Hockamock through all those W towns.
Should we just get a motion?
Oh, we need a, sorry.
A motion of adoptable.
Okay, Katie's second, Martha. All okay, but textbook adoption.
Thank you to the committee very much, and thank you to Dawn and Diane, who put a lot of work into this, and they're absolutely wonderful people to work with, so I compliment them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Full-day kindergarten is next on our agenda. Mrs. Benelli?
Thank you. As you know, we were last at the committee discussing our plans to research the parent interest and community interest in full-day kindergarten, and there's plans in place to offer parents a choice of half-day or full-day. I hope there are a lot of parents watching from home, and I especially hope a lot of parents watching from home were at the parent information night that we held a while ago about how this was all going to just work out perfectly, because it has indeed all worked out just perfectly in terms of the numbers. So if you look at our projections, people at home won't have those, but I'll, the kindergarten enrollment at the Borough School currently is about 70 students, 70 at the IGO, and we have 51 at the Taylor. The number of full-day requests as of this past Thursday, when this memo was written, was 35 for the Borough, so our class sizes, they would be 17 to 18 for full-day kindergarten. At the IGO, they were 32 with a, I think we, Wendy, if I'm correct, we still had one or two others that are still coming in. We have a few trickling in or other, special circumstances that we gave parents permission to wait a few days. And so that was at 32 for 16-16, but we have one or two more at IGO, so I would say it's more like 17-17 at this point. And at the Taylor, the same number. So our full-day class sizes at each of the three schools would be in the 17 to 18 range, which is perfect. We have a total enrollment of about 100 right now in full-day kindergarten, which is exactly what we projected. You wrote the grand. Half-day kindergarten, right now, the numbers are about 34 at the Borough, which would be two classes of half-day. We have 38 at the IGO, which would be 19 and 19. And we have one, will we have one full day at, um, one half-day, I'm sorry, one half-day at the Taylor, and we have 19 enrolled in that. So to sum up, we expect to offer two full-day kindergartens at the Borough and two half-day sessions. Two full-day kindergartens at the IGO and two half-day sessions. Two full-day kindergartens at the Taylor and one half-day section. And all of the class sizes will be in the 16 to 19 range, no matter if it's full or half. So everything is just glass half-full, magically fallen into place. And so we're, we're happy to let parents know that they should expect that they can, their requests will be honored, whatever they want for their child, they will get, and the class sizes are even, and we don't have any difficulties with class size that we know of right now. I would also like to say that parents were concerned about the balance of males and females, and they're fairly similar. The Borough School doesn't have as many girls enrolled in kindergarten next year as boys, so there's nothing much you can do about that. But other than that, that, those are pretty balanced for the full-day classes as well.
I have a question about the half-day. Will that, will that, will they change from morning to afternoon, or will they stay? How are we doing that now?
Well, that's still on our plate.
Okay.
If the, if the same, if there's going to be one teacher to teach that, for example, there would be an AM and a PM session. That's likely the scenario, because we don't have classroom space to have two classrooms used for two mornings, while we have the full-day kindergartens occupying other rooms. So the, the two schools, which are the Borough and the IGO, that will have half-day sessions, will likely have a morning and an afternoon in half-day kindergarten.
And with the Taylor, would you opt for morning or afternoon?
That's probably going to be morning, because that's a room by itself.
All right. And what about as far as, do you think we're going to be able to accommodate the requests for before and after care?
Kathy Layton, who's excellent, is working on that. They are, she is planning to expand to accommodate that. We've already talked about space that they would use, so she's underway. We do still have a lot to do in terms of the specialist schedules, because the full-day classes will have art, music and wellness. We're looking at our overall budget and revenues, our staffing, our, our schedules for the ed assistants. Those are all the details that we will now continue to work out, now that we know our exact numbers.
Yeah, one of the things that we have to be careful about, because we actually don't do it across the system now, is, is promising people before and after school, because we do have a waiting list and, and we'll continue to work on that. That's, that's an area that we really need to continue to focus on, because some of it's staffing and, you know, just available adults to be able to supervise. So, you know, that's an area. We do have, we do have, and we, we do have still some work to do on this program, but I'm very pleased that we'll be able to offer six sections of full-day kindergarten. It's just, it's just something that we, again, just to remind everyone, we actually didn't focus on this for this September, when we first started thinking about it, in the fall. And for us to be able to really implement this and to pull it all together and to have people excited about it, everyone that I've talked to is very excited about it, so it's good for the school system.
Perfect. Just, if I could, I'd like to ask, what percentage of the projections are now complete? I mean, are we yet, for instance, we may always get, we don't control if people move in, but are we far enough along that we know that this is pretty much the number, or do you think it could still?
Well, that's, that's a really interesting question, because we've been trying to analyze that. Paul and I were talking about it this afternoon. It's, it's larger than our projection, and we felt that our population would be pretty flat. Right now, we have 175 kindergarten students across the three schools, so, and we have 190 already registered. So we're going to have to look at that, and we're going to have to try to find, you know, a little bit about how that happened, which I think it'll be, I think it'll be a variety of things, actually. But it could be parents who would be looking at the charter school, could be parents who would typically, wanting a full-day program, would be looking at a private school for kindergarten. So we don't know all of that yet, but it's, I think it'll be interesting for us to analyze this more over the next couple of months. And I, and I still think, you know, we're kind of pushing the edge of where we would like to be with some of our class sizes, but we still have a little bit of capacity. So we have some, so if we do grow a little bit more in the right places, which you can never predict, but that's, those are the challenges that I think we'll face. But 15 more than what we thought going into the budget season, so.
You know, it's surprising, because when you always look at these enrollment numbers, and you always look at our pre-K and our K and what the numbers are, and then you get into first grade, and all of a sudden, you've got 15 more kids coming. So, you know, hopefully, as this progresses, and if we ultimately turn totally to full-day kindergarten, I think we'll have a very good idea of where we stand when it comes to first grade, because it, sometimes, I think it's a little bit of a shock after kindergarten, when you, all of a sudden, you've got a 50-some-odd jump. So, you know, maybe we will be getting a better handle on it if and when you go to full-day totally.
A lot of work.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you've done on that, both of you.
Thank you.
All right, our FY09 budget. And before I talk to, turn this portion over to Dr. Martis and Mr. Japson, I would like to say that a lot of work and concession has been made on both the town's side and on our side. It was my understanding that the original deficit was $248,000, and the town went to work and made adjustments on their side, and correct me if I am not correct in saying this, before they brought to us the $205,000 deficit. So with that in mind, we'll go on to the two of you now.
Thank you. I will articulate the big picture of this, hopefully, and I always rely on Paul for all the details. So we'll, just to, just to take off from what Bev said, the first thing I'd really like to do, since this was, I've been doing these budgets for a long time in different places, and so, and so there's always a little difference from community to community. But I, I want to thank Randy Scollins and Andy Gala and Jim Thrasher, the Chair of the Board of Selectment, for the work that they did in bringing this, in bringing this together. They, we had some disagreements, no question about it, and I think, but I think there was some very healthy discussions that took place. I also want to thank Paul, I want to thank Bev, and I want to thank Larry Harrington, because we all move together in that way as well. And the number of meetings that we held and the opportunities for the future, I think, in, in the next phase of this, after the budget is passed, a town meeting is to really work on the five-year projection for what's available, what we can look at for the future. And I think, I think that kind of cooperative spirit, I think, will be very, very helpful as we look at not only the services that we need to provide for the community, but also the services that the municipal side needs to provide for the community. It, we're, we're one community, and I think that's something that, that we were looking at. But just to, just to pick up on what, what Bev said, I'll just go over a little bit of what we have been talking about. Attached, please find the FY09 school budget we will ask town meeting to approve. Below are the latest reductions slash adjustments as agreed to with town officials prior to identifying the budget shortfall that we list below of $205,893. The shortfall was, for a number of weeks, really, as we were seeing the state, state revenue coming in, and we were, we were working with the town to adjust some of the local revenue as we were seeing it coming in. The shortfall for a number of weeks was $248,765. And the town officials reviewed their accounts, and they made adjustments in the amount of $42,872 that reduced the projected shortage to $205,893. And that's really the work that we've been doing over the last two weeks or more to try to identify, try to identify that. So if you look at the cover sheet, and then I'll let Paul go into a little bit of detail on what you'll see on the following pages. In order for us to, the town reduced by $45,000 in this last round, and we reduced by $160,893. Let me just articulate for the committee and the public where we did that. This committee, we've been discussing this since the beginning of the budget process. We had initially put in, not knowing about our nursing grant, we had initially put all of the salary that had been offset in the, in the last few years by the nursing grant into the operating budget, and we've had some indication that that grant could be in good shape for Foxborough. So we decided to take a little bit of a risk and put that, put that in as a, as an offset, put it back on the offset page, and take it out of the operating budget. We really won't know about this grant until the end of this month or early May, and we're fully prepared, if it doesn't come through, to come back to the committee and readjust as, as we may need to. The, we've decided to reduce the middle school assistant principal request, and when I say that, I mean request, because it was, it was something that we were really thinking was a very good idea. I still think it's a good idea, just the size of the school, to have two full-time assistant principals. But I, in prioritizing, I didn't feel that we could look at another teaching position in this particular round. So we're reducing that. It's, right now, it's .5. I've had a conversation with the assistant principal, Trent Donella, who, and said to him that there's enough in this to push it to .6, to add a little bit more time to his day and week, which I think will be helpful. Plus, I want it to be a signal that we really would like to get to full-time, and if we could make an adjustment to move that, then we, we will do that.
So it will be .6 next year?
.6, correct. Eliminate the grade six position. As the committee knows, and I think as many in the public know, we had two new positions, two new teaching positions in the FY09 budget. One was grade five, and the other was grade six, and we were looking at about the same issues in terms of class size. Right now, the class size is in the 23 range, and I asked the administration at the Hearn Middle School to prioritize, and they think that having, keeping that fifth-grade position, given the fact that students are transitioning from the elementary school to the middle school, trying to keep, reduce that class size down to the 20-21 range would be helpful for next year. I also want to say this, because I think it's important. If we see enrollment growth at the sixth-grade level in June, July, or August, I'm fully prepared to come to you after working through this budget with, with the recommendation that we really need to fund a position, because we don't want our class size to get any higher than that 23. So if, if that happens, right now, we're, we're pretty close to projection, and, but that's a concern. So I want to express that publicly as a concern. I think we need to continue to monitor that and make sure that, that we are meeting the needs. We, this fifth-grade class, I think, has had, had a terrific year in talking to the administration, so, but we are monitoring that for when they're in sixth grade. We have decided to reduce our request to make that teacher assistant position in the guidance office a secretarial position. There is enough, we didn't take all of that money out, there was about an $18,000 allocation. We are prepared to offer some summer days to offset that, but it won't increase the day. The secretary day would have increased beyond what the teacher assistant day is, but we will add some time during the summer, and we'll work with the administration to make sure that that's the most effective time. One of the results that we didn't anticipate in first putting the budget together, and we really didn't know until we finished the work, that Debbie and her team has been working on with full-day kindergarten, is we won't have as many kindergarten bus runs in the middle of the day. So we were able to eliminate three kindergarten bus runs, and that saves us $11,730. And then we're continuing to hear about leaves of absence and resignations and other shifts in the human resource budget. And so we believe that we can offset under what we call right now miscellaneous reductions. We'll be clear with that as we move along over the next couple of months, exactly where those positions are and what we're able, what we're going to be able to do in terms of filling. We're not reducing a position, so let me just be clear about that. This is just the ins and outs of people coming and going, and our ability to hire at different salary rates will allow us to do this. So the total adjustment that we've made is $160,893. And Paul, do you want to talk about the pages that the committee has that is, gives us much more detail?
Well, I'm not sure it's going to be much more detailed, but I can certainly tell the pages that this impacts. For the assistant principal, it would be page four. You'll see the FTE, second line on page four of the budget document.
Correct. Assistant principal, page four.
Second line on the Hearn Middle School. You see the FTE count is reflective of 1.6.
Yes.
The teachers, which would be the fifth line down, is at 47, which would reflect the reduction of 1.0.
So that's that sixth-grade?
Which would be the sixth-grade position. The middle school guidance secretary request, FTE on this doesn't really change. It was a swap from a full-time secretary to a full-time FTE-wise ed assistant, so that FTE-wise, it's neutral. The noontime kindergarten runs would be reflective on the transportation page, which is, it's not broken out in terms of specific kindergarten runs, it would be part of the regular runs in terms of salaries. And the miscellaneous reduction, we reduced the COLA request by $10,461. And the big number of the $52,700 for the nursing grant, you'll look at the last page of the budget document, you'll see an increase on the offset page of $52,700 for the nursing grant and the salary call. And the reduction on the COLA, the reduction on the COLA line was just from a bookkeeping standpoint. We use that line as our reduction.
I, we need, first of all, first of all, questions before we go.
Where are we in terms of the budget deficit? And we're, if you could just give us a quick update, we, we look at that each meeting.
I'll be, I'll be prepared. I'll be prepared at the next meeting to give you an in-depth analysis. We've actually picked up some money in the special education tuition line so that it won't be quite as bad. We've released, I think it's $10,000, I'm sorry, $15,000 out of the heat account, so that we'll pick up some money there. We picked up a little bit of money, a little over $2,000 in our electric analysis. This analysis, at this point, I believe, there's three more months on electricity and four months on heat, or I might have this reversed. So Mike and I sat down, Michael, Larry, we reviewed the numbers on those accounts, and we're comfortable with what we still have, so we've been conservative. And then every month, what we project, and we may release a little bit more, or we may ask for a little bit more. Overall, those are the main drivers at this point. I'm still projecting about a $3,300 deficit in bus fuel, based on the fact that we budgeted $2.30 a gallon, and we've been paying pretty consistently $2.60 a gallon. And just as an FYI, next year's budget reflects a $2.80 a gallon budget number. We're in the process right now of reprojecting our transportation account based on the fact that we're paying by the run, and so we'll reproject that. And other than that, there are no other large numbers. I'm waiting for the March bill from the out-of-district transportation account to see how that will look in terms of can we reduce our projection on the deficit as it currently exists on out-of-district special education transportation.
Just roughly, Paul, do you have an idea of what you're currently projecting the budget deficit to be?
It's going to get closer to, and this is very rough right now because there's a bunch of accounts that we're still looking at. We've got some salary accounts that we're reprojecting, such as teams, mentors, workshops, substitute teachers. Looks like that we're running ahead, considerably ahead of our run rate on substitute teachers. And preliminary projection on that was $25,000 to $30,000 we thought we could release out of that account. It was about a 29% run rate advantage to us, which we were really relatively surprised about. So that I think we're going to pick up $75,000, $80,000 in that vicinity by the time we get to the budget statement in the next school committee meeting.
We were projecting, what was it, 328? So is it still going to be around there with all those numbers, 275?
I think the last projection was around 275.
So the numbers you quoted are coming down from the 275?
Yes, yes. I really don't think we'll finish out the year in the black at all, but we have made some substantial progress, I think, on some of the accounts. And so there are some of the accounts that we don't pay on a regular basis every two weeks, that we pay twice a year, or three times a year. So those are the accounts that we're taking a hard look at right now, including our substitute accounts.
Deb, I hear you say that you didn't think we'd finish the year in the black?
Yes.
Okay, so how much in the red do you think we're going to be?
I'm going to guess between $100,000 and $200,000. And the primary driver on that is sped tuitions and sped out-of-district transportation.
Well, the only thing there is that we could use the, that would be an appropriate use for the revolving, special.
Yes.
Any more questions?
Not a question, just some comments about all the work that went into coming to these numbers that you're presenting with us tonight about the school adjustments and reductions. And obviously, it's been a collaborative effort between school and municipal, and just wanted to recognize that. And, you know, we look around at other towns, from Mansfield to Norton, and although no one's happy with these reductions, obviously, I guess we can find the silver linings when we look at other communities and see what difficult financial situations they're in, and I think we're very fortunate. But again, we're keeping an eye on it, and I think your presentation was wonderful. Dr. Martis, so just wanted to make those comments.
And kudos for being able to do this without having to release anyone from the fine jobs they're doing across the entire system, entire system, staff, faculty. It's incredible. All right, so I will need a motion to bring forward to the town meeting our budget of It is on page 19, if you wish to double-check that.
I'll make that work.
Is that correct, Paul?
Yes.
That's the correct one?
That's the number we need.
That's the number we need for motion. All right, Martha is making the motion. Katie is seconding that. May I have a vote in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Other matters?
Before we move on, I would like to just, I'm glad we took the vote, I'd like to echo both Martha's sentiments, Katie and Dr. Martis. I think this has been, a phenomenal job has been done. Martha, you did that last year, Deb, you and Larry, Dr. Martis, this selectmen. I just want to register a real alarming concern. Please keep in mind, this was the first year in my almost five years that we ran budget deficit, and even though we will come out okay, it is a deficit. I think the split here, we're going to do what needs to get done, but I'd just like to echo the fact that each year in closing the gap, we've not only reached out and closed the gap, but we've started off reducing our salary lines. One year was over $200,000, last year was $125,000. That does have impact. The last area is, we're not sitting on money. We're reducing our salary lines, and we've reduced our revolving accounts. We will always need to carry a substantial amount in certain key accounts. It's not free cash or revolving accounts. And we have, over the last two years, been spending money for very necessary capital projects, as we should be. But I just want to send a note, I am thrilled with what we're doing, thank you for the hard work, but people need to know, this is very tough. This isn't quite as tough as 2003, when we had to cut the pain of $1 million. But this is our fourth budget cycle, and we've not gotten back all of the things that we had cut in 2003. And along the way, this team, along with the municipal side, have worked very hard to each year close the gap, but this is not even our hardest year. We're projecting next year to be the toughest. So I'm not doom and gloom, I want to thank everyone for what they've done, but this is a real red flag and a concern. And I think the fact that the selectmen and the municipal side would like to work with the school committee with some five-year projections, I think that that's a very positive thing, and I hope we do that sooner rather than later. Thank you, Deb.
Under other matters, would you?
I'll go last.
Okay, Katie?
I went to Bandarama about, was it last week? Dr. Rose may be good. Give us a performance, it was wonderful. I don't know if other people in the committee attended. Oh, actually, yeah, just spectacular, just spectacular. So I just wanted to commend again the music department for just a wonderful presentation.
I think it was amazing, I caught part of it last night, when Mr. Mask was talking about the numbers of children that were, it's impressive. I loved his comment when he said, if you want to know where a certain amount of students are tonight, there's no question they're right here. The numbers were incredible. And when he talked about how many more when you included the string and the choir, the numbers are staggering to think that they're involved in such a tremendous program. And when you look at our students when they graduate from high school, there are accomplished musicians, they're second to none, they're absolutely incredible. So it's a program that's near and dear to my heart. And watching it last night on TV, it's amazing when you watch the fifth grade, the sixth grade, and then you get up, it's like, wow, it's like children, and it's nice because they're all sitting there knowing where they can go, if they stick with the program, if they stick with the teachers that we have in place. And it's, I know I've got a fifth grader playing, granddaughter playing the flute, and I, most of my kids have been in the music program, and it's tremendous. It just keeps getting better. I don't know how, but it keeps getting better.
Kate, other?
I think we've said it all, all the kudos to getting through and healing through a difficult week last week. I would, though, like to thank the two students who are Dan Skinskas and Liz Greeley, who I thought show incredible poise and maturity. And I'd like to thank the Foxborough Reporter for not sensationalizing it, but giving the facts and then doing such a great job to showcase our students and to do it in a way that wasn't sensational, but very helpful to the healing process. I also would like to thank the Foxborough Lions, who completed another bottle and can drive, and this time benefited the Foxborough High School cheerleaders. The Foxborough Lions have supported the boys' basketball team, the girls' tennis team, the girls' cheerleaders, and also the scout troop in town. And I think it's just very important what they've done, and I'd like to send a thank you from all of us at the school committee.
This is a town that supports one another, and it's very refreshing.
Did you want to mention?
Yes, I did.
Please, a date of company?
We have a very exciting event that's going to be coming up on June 14. There has been an education foundation formed within the town of Foxborough. It's called Faces, which is a Foxborough, a community enriching schools. And the Patriots are going to be our host for the evening, and they've been very generous, very supportive, very excited about what we're trying to do here in Foxborough, and very committed with the rest of our committee. I always tell everybody, the best part about doing something is being a part of the committee. And I think we have as much fun sitting there talking, and the excitement is contagious. So please keep June 14 open. It's going to be a gala event, we'll have music, we'll have different kinds of entertainment, we're going to have a live auction. The tickets will be going on sale shortly for our four incredible raffle items that we're going to be putting out there. So we'll be calling people and trying to get people to jump on board with this. So as we move forward, will somebody be coming forward and speaking to us about everything that's going to be happening? But a special, special thanks to the Patriots and the Craft Organization. I think they're as excited as we are about this gala event, so it's going to be tremendous.
Great. And my other is, I'd like to share with you that I was able to be on Capitol Hill this morning in Boston for the Seventh Suburban Coalition Annual Legislative Breakfast. And there are several members, they are from towns all over Massachusetts, they encourage the selectmen to be part of this, or school committee members, there were both selectmen and school committee members there. Some of the towns have just school committees, some have just selectmen, there are a couple of towns that have both selectmen and school committee members. It has gained in importance so that, there was the question, are we collaborative and partners now? There was a discussion about that, but at least we are working on the relationship, the legislators and the school people. They know the deep need for education. Our speakers today were Leslie Kerwin, who is the Secretary of Administration and Finance, which is fine to have somebody of that caliber as one of our speakers. There were several representatives standing in the room, listening to these presentations. They were all introduced, and there were some senators also. For the economic and fiscal outlook, they had Michael Widner, who is from the Massachusetts Taxpayers Foundation. All excellent, all concerned about the fiscal constraints that the seeming recession has on all of us right now. But they are working to, they're going to honor anything that they have said to their five-year plan. They're not going to readjust and go downwards. Our pièce de raison speaker was Salvatore Di Massey, who is the Speaker of the House in the Massachusetts House of Representatives. So to get this kind of commendation and encouragement and support is very special. And the dues for this, I would highly recommend that Foxborough become a supporter of this group, is $250 a year. So it's something I would like us, as a school committee, to recommend that our community become a part of. Okay.
Debbie, you in?
Do you have any? Okay. Dr. Martis?
Thank you. Let me start out by just reiterating what I had said when Jeff Theodos was here. The way that the high school stepped up during a very difficult time was really incredible. I spend a lot of time thinking about studying leadership, and one of my mentors said long ago, it's very easy to lead during good times. And you really see the character and integrity of a group when something that is very unexpected happens and something that is tragic and can really hurt a school system and a school. And I think the way that the high school, terrific stories all around, and I'm actually not going to mention, I was thinking about mentioning specific names, but there were just so many names to mention, about people who stepped up, the English department, the teachers did a great job of filling in those gaps and making sure that good things were happening right from the very beginning. The people were just pulled together, and that's the sign of a terrific school, it's a sign of a terrific school system, it's a sign of a terrific community. And the number of people that called and sent emails, et cetera, to me personally and said, well, thank you for helping us through this, was really heartening. So I want to say that this was a unique week last week, and a week that doesn't happen very often, but it does give us an opportunity to reflect after the fact and try to figure out, well, how did we do this? We had the administrators and I reflected on this last week in a meeting, and what could we do differently, what are some of the things that really worked well? So, you know, that was helpful, but it was really the people. And given that this is just such a people business, it's really the people who stepped up, and the students who I think felt supported, you know, all of the staff who stepped up to help, guidance staff, et cetera, across the board, our psychologists and social workers and others, were all ready, from not just here at the high school, but across the system, were all ready to offer any kind of support that they felt that was needed. So I'm pleased to announce, and I know that Jeff gave me, he was ready to announce, I think, I met with an English teacher who retired a few years ago, who called Kathleen Keen, the department head, they communicated almost immediately when people were hearing about this event. Peter Dost, who I think many of you know, I met with him this afternoon, he spent almost the whole day at Foxborough High School today, and he's ready to get started tomorrow. He came up from North Carolina over the weekend, and he just thinks so much of this high school that he's very interested in just picking this up and moving with it right from the very beginning. So I think many of you know Peter, I've known Peter for a long, long time, when I was teaching here, he was teaching here. And so he's very excited about coming, and I think this is really going to work well for the students, because he really cares about making sure that our students have a terrific end of the school year and that all of the requirements will be in place, students will be well cared for, other teachers in that department have already been picking up some of that. So just very, very impressive, and I really can't thank people enough. I think it's just a wonderful tribute to Foxborough High School and the community to see this kind of thing take place. The other one, the other announcement that I have, and we thought we might have a more formal announcement tonight, but I'm ready to announce another partnership with the New England Patriots that will be released in a press release on Wednesday, really to enhance some of the academic part of Foxborough High School that's going on. And I want to thank both Bob and Jonathan Kraft, who have been instrumental in this, and Dan Murphy, who has really been terrific, and Greg O'Brien, who's one of the media consultants, who's really worked closely with our high school administration. And we're just not quite ready to, that press release isn't finished yet, so I'm not able to say too much more, other than this is another good example of what's going on with the New England Patriots and the type of work that we're able to do together, I think, to forge really a great partnership. I think, to forge really a great partnership. I mentioned to Dan when I was at an event about Partners Healthcare a week ago, Friday, that as we look at the budget and we look at some of the difficulties, there was a $1.2 million building permit, series of building permits, allocation to Foxborough from Patriots Place. And it wouldn't surprise me if we would be in the same place as some of these other communities if we didn't have even that kind of, you know, that kind of support. So they're thinking about, you know, how to do some more work in the community, I think will be reflected over the next few weeks and over the next few months. And I'm just really grateful that they're here and that they've already stepped up.
Peter was a senior in high school when I was a freshman, graduated from here. Some of my kids had Peter as a teacher. And I think it just, it speaks well of the community, that when someone hears, we need some help, that they're right here to help us. And I think that's so important. And as a member of this committee, I want to thank both you, Ann, and Debbie, for leading us through this past week. You're such a tremendous asset, the two of you, to the system. Your calm demeanor, the way you handle things, the way you approach things. The staff has so much confidence in the two of you. And I can't thank you enough for you both being here. Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm ready to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion for collective bargaining strategies.
Collective bargaining strategies, and we will not return to open session. Do I have a second? Katie?
I'll second it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Okay. Roll call. Roll call. Katie?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, aye?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay. Good meeting, people. Thank you.